Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To remind those in attendance this evening that if you'd like to speak during the public comment period or on any of the public hearings this evening, we've got a sign-on sheet towards the back and would encourage you and welcome you to please sign up if you choose to do Second item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Great, thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a tie.
Dr. Sam has.
All right, Dr. Sam. And any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, there are matters from council members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share this evening? All right, I'll never miss an opportunity. So we've got just a couple of things just to let folks know kind of what's going on. We've had a great conversation and appreciation to both W City Manager Mr. Shaw and Luke Jude, our city planner, as a kickoff conversation in the Basic City and West Commerce area for a small area plan that was held on January the 30th. And both Bobby and Sam were able to join in that. And what a great way to sort of kick off a conversation about the future of different parts of our community. So appreciated that. I attended the CSPDC meeting on February the 4th, which is the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission, a regional body which you'll hear more about later on this evening, so as a little teaser. I had a conversation, I met with the Vice Chair of the School Board about some mutual initiatives and we'll be looking to do some more of that leading into the budget season and then moving forward to strengthen communications with our elected school board. So that was a great, great coffee conversation. And that's all I have to share this evening, so. All right, number four is to hold a public hearing to receive comments relative to an application of Mr. Jim Coe, owner, to hold a public hearing and consider introducing ordinance to rezone 201 Short Street, tax map numbers 45, 1, 2, 30, comma, 31, and 32 from LI Light Industrial to CB Central Business District. Mr. Jude.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The proposed rezoning today is at 201 Short Street. That's located next to the old, or next to the old Costco's cold storage, the tall vacant brick building that you see downtown. It's just across Short Street from that, so kind of backs up to Arch Avenue, Kroger's just in the distance in this picture. So this is the, one of the only buildings that's on the new Race Avenue corridor in that area, and it currently holds free-range electric. Here's a map of the area. Again, you see Arch Avenue here, the ice plant. This is where the new Race Avenue is located. The applicant today owns several of these parcels all the way up to here and owns the subject property as well and has his business in the building. On the other side, you can see there's some more light industrial zoning where the ice plant is, down to this area that we call Rivertown. This area is zoned HI, but it's going to become parkland. And then the rest of the area around it is all CB Central Business District, which is our downtown zone. Again, that's, if you didn't notice, that's the only property in the block that's zoned The request is to rezone the property from LI Light Industrial, which allows a variety of light industrial uses, various kinds of manufacturing and assembly, lots of auto-oriented commercial uses, to CB Central Business. Central Business allows most, a variety of retail-oriented commercial uses and upper-story residential, and it restricts most industrial uses. The purpose of the CB District is to support the growth of the downtown and to allow for a mix of uses that people like to be around, things like shops and other kinds of businesses and residences. And the purpose of the LI District is to provide areas of town that can not necessarily have a large manufacturing facility, but can accommodate a lot of other types of uses that might be more noxious if they were around homes. Kind of the, I think the LI zoning in this district is a little bit of a remnant of some of the stuff that used to be there, including the cold storage plant, the mill at South River, a number of other industrial uses in that area that have largely moved on. The proposed use is the current use, which is the Free Range Electric LLC. It's a business that supplies parts for electric tractors. However, the applicant only needs a portion of his building for that use and has discussed renting another part of the building to the Blue Ridge Children's Museum. The Blue Ridge Children's Museum has been working for years now to try to get established and has done all kinds of great pop-up museums and other activities around town and is already contributing a lot to the community, but is looking for a brick-and-mortar space. If that doesn't work out, the applicant's looking to rent the space to another primary tenant who would likely be retail-oriented or would not be an industrial type of use. We have a conceptual site plan here. Again, we don't need a site plan at this point for, just for the rezoning, but this does give you an idea of what it will look like potentially when the property is further improved. They'll have to do some work with their parking, they'll have to provide handicap spacing, they'll have to comply with ADA in terms of entry ramp and do a little bit of landscaping. But that'll mostly be handled through the site plan process, and it'll be handled as a minor site plan. Here's what the site looks like currently. Again, it's kind of a low, mostly prefab industrial building. It's not a building that we would probably imagine being there long-term, but the improvements, I think, will make it more aesthetically appealing and will allow it to contribute a little bit more to the downtown area for the time being. It is eligible for city facade and landscape grants, and there's just some potential drawings of how they could comply with ADA or do some of the other improvements necessary to bring in the museum. Just as a side note, and this is not from the applicant, this is a city drawing that's existed for quite a while, but this property is located in what we call Block A, which is the block of downtown between Race Avenue and Arch Avenue. And that's a block that has long been eyed as ideal for redevelopment, potentially a residential redevelopment in the downtown, eventually a little front onto the redeveloped Constitution Park and lookout over the mountains. And there've been quite a few studies that have been done suggesting that this area could eventually be redeveloped. That's why I say that, you know, we don't imagine, and even the applicant, I don't think, imagines this particular building and the site remaining that way for the next 50 years. But for now, that's what's there. And this is certainly a ways away from being feasible from a market perspective. This rezoning, though, does help to bring some of these redevelopment visions closer to happening in that it brings the whole block, it consolidates the whole block into the Central Business District Zone, which will allow for the kind of redevelopment that we want to see in this area in the future. This is technically a downzoning, though it's really more of a lateral move zoning-wise, but it's not a great, we're not granting any huge new entitlements to the owner of the property. This isn't like a rezoning in a, you know, where there's going to be a huge new subdivision. It is consistent with a comprehensive plan designation. This is essentially, that means that it's, he's rezoning it to what we would like to see there. This is part of the downtown core, which is supposed to encourage things like this museum. And it's consistent with the trend in the area, which, as I mentioned, is the sort of gradual recession of industrial uses around here and trying to transition and reuse those buildings for more commercial and residential purposes. Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval on a 7-0 vote. We have the applicant here, if you'd like to hear from him or have any more questions. And we also have a representative from the Blue Ridge Children's Museum, in case you're curious about their plans. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Jude? Great, thank you very much. With that, we will open the public hearing. Mr. Ham, did anyone sign up?
So no one signed up to speak, sir.
Okay. Let's certainly offer an opportunity for Mr. Coe, if you'd like to share anything with council. Luke did a pretty good job explaining it all.
He covered it very well.
All right, how about you, Karen? Is everybody good with that? All right, great. All right, so with that, we'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll move.
So moved.
All right, thank you. So this ordinance and others introduced this evening would be considered our February 25th meeting at City Council, so appreciate, thank you all for being here this evening. Okay, item number five is to consider appointing three viewers and one alternate to consider the impact of a request by David Kirby, representative of Valley Covenant Church, to close and vacate alleys adjacent to tax map parcel 42-12-7 Walnut Grove Farm subdivision. Mr. Ham.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of council, the City Planning Department has received a request from Valley Covenant Church to vacate undeveloped alleys around the property referenced in the title item here. Just for general awareness, and you have a location map in your packet, but this property is bounded by Carmen Avenue, Summercrest Avenue, Stonewall Jackson Drive, and a portion of property Lee Drive. It's an undeveloped property, and I think as part of the anticipated redevelopment or development of the site, the church seeks to vacate and close these undeveloped alleys. The charter requires us to appoint viewers to assess the impacts or potential inconvenience to the public that might result from the closures. At a subsequent meeting, following the opportunity for the viewers to develop their report, council will set a public hearing and hear the matter more formally at that time. But this evening, we just need to appoint viewers, three viewers and an alternate, please.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend Mark Snyder, who's on the list as chair, Jeff Mallett, Ellen Winters, and our alternate Doris Holby.
Okay. So we've got a motion to appoint viewers and an alternate that's identified. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think your motion carries. Next is to consider adopting a resolution of support of an application by the city on behalf of River City Collective LLC to the Commonwealth Industrial Revitalization Fund for the redevelopment of 320 West Main Street, commonly recognized as the former Leggett Building. Mr. Hitchens.
Mr. Member, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, as the name implies, the Industrial Revitalization Fund is a program offered by the Commonwealth of Virginia through the Department of Housing and Community Development to leverage local and private investments to redevelop vacant and deteriorated buildings and land and industrial and commercial properties. This is an annual grant. It is highly competitive and, of course, subject to the General Assembly funding it. It is funded for this current fiscal year, and the applications are due March 1st. Due to the requirements of the grant, the city must apply on behalf of the applicant for this grant. We're currently working with the owners of the former Leggitt's department store, as you described, in the Central Business District, to restore this gateway landmark to a revenue-generating mixed-use facility. We're seeking a resolution of support for this application. While we're still finalizing the application that is due March 1st, as I mentioned, we are anticipating applying for the full amount of $600,000, which will be matched 100% by the developer. There's no financial obligation for this grant from the city, just a resolution of support. Happy to address any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hitchens?
I do have a question. Is it going to be renovating the current structure, or does this grant allow for tearing it down and building something new?
This will be renovating the current structure.
Okay.
Good question. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt a resolution supporting the application?
So moved.
Great, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Only because I think Mr. Allen and I got this a couple of times last year, maybe some other colleagues, I'm going to just double down on the explanation of this, okay? So we are offering a resolution of support for a private entity to receive funds from the state, of which we are, the city of Waynesboro is under no financial commitment and no financial participation in. So just to reiterate and double down on that explanation. Okay, great. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Number seven is commending the Shenandoah, Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission on their 50th anniversary. So as I mentioned before, I was a member and serve on the board of directors for the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission, which serves as our regional planning entity. And the idea here, created 50 years ago, all over the Commonwealth, to serve in a regional capacity for planning functions and such that each community wouldn't have to have very higher their own specialized staff to perform specialized functions. Instead, it's a central body that accomplishes regional work in regional specific terms. And so with that, I am hunting down my copy of the resolution. I thought I would read that out loud here. If I find it. So whereas it's their 50th anniversary, so we wanted to do this. Whereas the city, Waynesboro City Council supports a joint resolution, that's not the right one, hold on a second, folks. Whereas in 1966, the General Assembly created the Metropolitan Areas Study Commission, the HAN Commission, which found that a holistic approach to solving local and regional problems needed to be taken and recommended a new concept, the creation of Planning District Commissions, PDCs. And whereas the Virginia Area Development Act passed in 1968 created the PDC framework to encourage and facilitate local government cooperation and state and local cooperation in addressing on a, addressing on a regional basis problems of greater than local significance. And whereas, following passage of this act, the state undertook an aggressive effort to establish PDC boundaries, and by 1969, the final district boundaries were announced. And whereas, on October 1st, 1969, the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission, or CSPDC, was established and includes the counties of Augusta, Bath, Highland, Rockbridge, and Rockingham, the cities of Buena Vista, Harrisonburg, Lexington, Stanton, and Waynesboro, and 11 incorporated towns. And whereas in 2019, the CSPDC is celebrating its 50 years of promoting and supporting regional collaboration. And whereas, the CSPDC serves to foster intergovernmental cooperation by bringing together elected and appointed officials and citizens to discuss common needs and develop solutions to regional issues. And whereas, over the years, the CSPDC has conducted studies and identified solutions in the areas of transportation, economic development, infrastructure, housing, the environment, disaster education and mitigation, and community development, among many other things. And whereas, the CSPDC also implements services and provides technical assistance to its member local governments. And whereas, the CSPDC often serves as a liaison between the local and state governments, partnering with the state to carry out state initiatives at the local and regional level. And whereas, most recently, the CSPDC has been instrumental in bringing in over $66 million in new investments to the region. For every dollar the CSPDC receives in local dues, it has leveraged $36 in average state and federal funds. And whereas, the CSPDC is committed in promoting opportunities for regional collaboration and expanding the types of services they provide to their member governments. And whereas, the CSPDC takes great pride in their history and accomplishments while recognizing the importance of looking ahead to the challenges of the future, and now therefore be it resolved, the city of Waynesboro hereby commends the CSPDC on the occasion of their 50th anniversary. And the City Council of Waynesboro expresses its appreciation for the vital support provided by the CSPDC to each of its member jurisdictions and region. So with that, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Great, thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number eight on the agenda is to consider approving an application from Mental Health America for a partial street closure of Race Avenue on Saturday, March 30th, 2019, from 8:45 to 10:45 a.m. Mr. Ham.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is a fundraiser for the Mental Health Association. This is the Fund a Friend 5K, also known as the Spring into Action 5K, excuse me. And the intersection of Short and Race is the beginning and concluding part for this event. It'd be my recommendation to grant the request.
Great. It's a popular corner this night. Are there any, are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the partial street closure for Fund a Friend 5K?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8B is to consider approving the request from the Wayne Theater Alliance for the sale and consumption of alcohol on city property in association with the South River Music Festival on Saturday, June 1st, 2019, from 3:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. Mr. Ham.
So this event is, I think, the second annual or third annual perhaps, and council's interest or obligation consideration here is simply to authorize the consumption of alcohol on city property.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the sale and consumption of alcohol on city property in association with the aforementioned festival?
I'll make that motion.
Good, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8C is to consider approving an application from Mr. Joe Kaminsky, Blue Ridge Soapbox Classic Derby President, to close a portion of Main Street and adjacent streets placed necessary barricading and for amplified sound on Saturday, June 15th, 2019, from 5:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of holding the annual Blue Ridge Soapbox Derby. Mr. Ham.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll run quickly through the street closure arrangement. This is the same logistics and street plan that we've used in the previous year or that the Blue Ridge Soapbox have. Main Street is closed at Race Avenue and at Maple Avenue. Arch is closed at Federal Street and Lumos Plaza. Wayne is closed at Federal Street and Lumos Plaza, and Church Street at Federal Street and Church Street at Lumos Plaza as well. And again, the rear of, or Lumos Plaza will remain partially open to afford access to the back of some of those businesses, and appreciate the Soapbox working with those businesses to make that happen. But this is the operation that we've used successfully previously.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the request of street closures for the 2019 Soapbox Derby?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? I would just encourage looking for volunteers for the annual council races against our counterparts in Stanton. We are the award-winning city, of course, but I would love to hold that steady. All right, so we have a motion, proper second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You know, it'd be great if we could, it's such a hallmark and signature event for our city, if we could maybe through social, our social media and the like, maybe sort of partner with them to provide some supplemental advertising and marketing for the event. It'd be great to have folks just come out and experience it, even those that aren't racing. It's just such a great event for our community. So does that sound like a good idea to everybody?
It is.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you. So number nine is communication correspondence and calendar.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
I just have one change on that. The 20th and 21st, a change in our budget work session from the 20th to the 21st?
We're working on that. If we can confirm that this evening, that would be helpful. I think we're good.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. It's on the 21st.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the citizen comment period. Would anybody sign up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Tom McDonald.
Mr. McDonald, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record?
I'll do that.
And then you know the stoplight feature here, green go, yellow slow down, and my daughter just got a permit this past week, so I'm very keen on what these things mean. So if you wouldn't mind just keeping an eyeball on those, I appreciate it.
Tom McDonald, 1117 Club Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It was great to see Waynesboro being designated as the best city in Virginia to reside. That's something for all our citizens to really be proud of. In the past, there's been numerous Virginia municipalities that have been awarded the significant title of being an all-America city. Therefore, I strongly feel that it's our turn. Along those lines, I've taken the liberty to obtain all the information and application for us to achieve this goal, of which I'm going to give this information to Mr. Ham for his approval and expertise in applying for this award. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for your efforts. Appreciate it.
We've still got 10 minutes.
Yeah, we've still got, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks so much. It's your initiative. Mr. Mark Stevens.
Mr. Stevens, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Mark Stevens, 2549 Bellevue Road.
Great, I'll just remind you of the stoplight feature, too.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am going to read my comments to you regarding the ordinance that was going to be introduced back in June about chickens and roosters. I am requesting that the City Council consider the proposed ordinance from the city manager regarding banning roosters and limiting chickens within the city. My interest in this ordinance is my personal experience with a residence behind my home that has at least one rooster, although I'm not certain there isn't another, and several chickens. The rooster, in doing his job, creates a noise nuisance daily. It begins just It begins just before dawn and continues periodically throughout the day. It makes it impossible to open windows or leave a patio door open without hearing the rooster crowing loudly and clearly. Spending time working, visiting, or playing in the yard is impacted by continued crowing noise. While I might expect to hear the noise of roosters crowing if I lived in the county near farms, I wouldn't expect to hear roosters crowing from backyards in the middle of an established city of twenty-two thousand with more than ten thousand housing units. At least, that's what census.gov says. Within the city of Waynesboro, it seems to me that it would be a reasonable expectation that one is not going to experience roosters crowing, or an unreasonable number of chickens roaming in yards. I would hazard a guess that the average lot size in Waynesboro neighborhoods is somewhere around eight or nine thousand square feet. You can drive through any of the established neighborhoods in Waynesboro and see the similarities in lot sizes and the proximity, proximity to neighboring homes. It is clear from a drive through any of the neighborhoods within the city that we all live very close to each other. Close enough that the sights, sounds, and smells from our yards can be, and likely are, experienced by our neighbors. Just for the record, I would consider myself pro-chicken, and I don't hold any animus to the rooster. But a person living in a community where we are so closely connected in our neighborhoods by the proximity of our homes and yards should be able to expect that there are reasonable guidelines in place to eliminate disagreement between neighbors on keeping of barnyard animals. I would suggest that the city manager, in defining reasonable guidelines to be included in the needed ordinance, consider the ordinance in Stanton regarding the same, and that is eighteen-one-five-three-oh-three-oh, and eighteen-one-five-three-oh-four-oh. In closing, I would like to state that very likely, based on the hospitality you find throughout Waynesboro, the folks that have roosters and chickens in their yards today are good people and good neighbors. But in the absence of a reasonable ordinance providing clear guidelines places folks in this sometimes awkward position of having to broker difficult conversations that can lead to strained relationships. Folks should be able to maintain a reasonable number of chickens that are maintained in coops. Roosters should be living in wide-open spaces where they can diligently fulfill their calling without disturbing the peace. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sarah Leach.
Hey, Ms. Leach, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, and then we've got the stop signs.
I'm Sarah Leach, and I live at seven-hundred Walnut Avenue. Seven-hundred Walnut Avenue, lifelong resident, and several years ago was brought to my attention the lack of an ordinance in the city in regards to poultry that lives in your neighborhood. I contacted our animal control officer after I noticed the odor from seventy-plus chickens that lived two doors from me. It gets to the point in the summer that you cannot sit on your porch or deck because of this odor. Along with that would be, I will add, there's some concern at just of farm animals in general being in your neighborhood. I also have three large beehives that are in my neighborhood, within a house or two away. That's a problem in the city, if you, in the city, summer, if you have guests, if you have anyone that's allergic to a bee, you don't sit out with three hives around. When I contacted the animal control officer, she informed me then that there was no ordinance unless I had noticed the animals being mistreated, which obviously I have not, they've been lovingly cared for. I'm a preschool teacher, I think it's a wonderful project for families to raise chickens. There's lots to be learned from it, and one of my learning experiences was they crow all day long. They start at approximately four a.m. In this flock of, let's say, fifty to seventy now, I would say the majority of them are roosters. They occasionally get out, they can be in the alley behind the house, or in the street in front of the house. The lady has made great attempt to have them fenced in, but they're chickens and they get out. I've also noticed foxes in the area in front of my house that are moving towards these chicken coops and pens. So, that's a problem also. The runoff is a problem. The sanitation is a problem. So, I plead for the city council members, I've spoken with several of you individually, to take some action, and let's get some ordinance in place so that our animal control officers will have some ability to help with these problems, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leach.
That's it, sir.
Okay. All right, no closed meeting this evening. So, that's it. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Ms. Anderson made it.
Ms. Anderson, we are adjourned, thank you.